All right, thank you all very much for being here this evening and welcome to everybody for the Kattati City Council and successor agency of the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, July 23rd. Want to welcome those who are watching us on that fancy machine where pictures show up and sound comes out, whatever it is called, but it's a very cool concept. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Deluxo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And I'll show Councilmember Morris absent.
And thank you for that. And I'd like to also introduce staff, so you've heard our names, we're up here at your city council. We have our city manager, Damian Obid, our city attorney, John Bacher. We have nobody from the police department at this point in time, but somebody may be here soon, probably Lieutenant Endy. Our city engineer and director of public works, Craig Scott. Our administrative services director, Angela Quarter. Our, and we're going to hear more about this later, our director of community development, Noah Haush, and of course, our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. And with that, if you could all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much for that. We are now at item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And we have our regular meeting minutes for June 25.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Oh, it's changed since I was absent for that day.
Yes, you were, so please show a three, you'll figure it out, three yeses, one abstention, and one no vote. I guess that's a second abstention, I'm not sure. All right, so since I screwed that up, let's all move on quickly to the next agenda item, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Kattati Ronard Park, excuse me, the Ronard Park-Kattati Regional Library host events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, book clubs, yes, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports a variety of recreation programs for all ages, see details on the web at kattatcity.org. And finally, Tuesday, August 6th, is National Night Out at La Plaza Park. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Activities for kids start at 6:00 PM, and dinner prepared by your police department will be served at 7:00 PM. At dusk, the movie Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse, in case you're interested, will be shown on a giant inflatable screen in the park. This is a free event. All right, we'll move now to, yes, council member?
May I make one more announcement?
Sure, please.
Thank you. Just attending the Beats meeting with the officers, and they mentioned that they will be participating in a school supply drive this Friday at Scandia Fund Center from 3:00 to 6:00. They'd like you to bring school supplies and score a free round of mini golf or a half hour at the arcade. And again, that's this Friday at Scandia.
Very good, thank you very much for that. All right, we are now at item six, which is approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, no changes.
All right, thank you very much. And we're now at item seven, which is citizen's business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And do we have anyone who would like to address the council? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close citizen's business. And I, I see a reporter from the Community Voice, our local newspaper in the back, Irene Hillsendogger, and I believe there was a new reporter that you were going to be taking under your wing, that individual's not here yet.
I had Jackson, he said he was coming, but we dropped him.
All right, all right, well, I was going to have you introduce him, but maybe we can, you know, just so everybody knows who he is, we can try that a little bit later on in the agenda. Thanks. Okay, now we're at item eight, which is our consent calendar, and we have items A, B, C, D, and E. And we already had opened the public comment, and there was no public comment, I just want to double check. No public comment, any, Mr. Behrich, you have?
I'll read.
Okay. Could you tell us which item, too, please?
Yeah, thank you. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Behrich, I'm a former city councilman here. I just, just immediately here, found it a little interesting that you would ask for Irene for information about someone who's not here at the meeting, to introduce a reporter or something. It's very odd, I haven't seen that before, but it's not maybe a bad idea, but I thought, boy, if we go down that road, you've introduced city staff, city council, you know, you might want to introduce some notable past city council members in good standing in this town, and other notable citizens like Ms. Alderman. We add a lot of flavor to these evenings, so it's really something to consider, that we don't want to see anybody playing favorites, maybe introduce everybody, or, or forget the other people in the public.
All right, thanks for your comments, appreciate it. All right, seeing that there's no one else to comment on the consent calendar, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back to council for action.
Move to approve. A second.
We have a motion is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 4-0 vote in favor. All right, I'm going so fast, I have to catch up, so we are now at item nine, direction on future agenda items. Does anybody, I'll start with Councilmember Harvey, nothing, anything in this direction?
Nothing.
All right. We are now at item 10, public hearings. The first item is consideration of objections to report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and adoption of a resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding, and directing levying of assessments. And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, public works director, city engineer, this presentation will be short. This is an annual process we go through, there is one delinquent sewer account that has not paid their sewer bill, and has had six notifications all, all year long, with every two months getting a, an invoice, and notice in the, in the mail that money is due. So the process here is to first set a public hearing date, which we did back, which the council did on June 25th, and we set the public hearing date for today, to hold a public hearing to receive protests on the sewer charges, and consider adopting a resolution approving the report of outstanding sewer charges and penalties, and directing the levying of assessment on the property tax bills. So the, the penalties total on this one account, eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents and of the $714.21 bill, total bill. These are the penalty provisions, these are the penalty provisions of the city's municipal code, which are 10% of the original amount, and then a half a percent on the overdue amount every, every bi-monthly billing period. With that, that concludes my, the presentation, I'd be happy to respond to questions.
All right, very good, thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? Councilmember?
So is, I'm glad to see that there's only one now, because in previous years, there have been many more than that, and is this one of our repeat, customers? It is, okay, yeah, some people like to pay their bills on their tax rolls, I guess. Okay, I'm, am glad to see that we do have it down to one, though, thank you.
In other words, that was a rhetorical question, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Well, I wanted to know if it was a new person that may be, maybe training, or...
They will learn in time. Councilmember Landman or Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions for staff?
No questions.
No questions. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and if anybody has any comments on this, seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and bring it back to council for action.
I would move to adopt a resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding, and directing levying of assessment on the fiscal year 2019-2020 property tax rolls.
Second.
All right, motion is second, any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 4-0 vote in favor. Thank you very much, we'll go on to 10B, which is establishing the outstanding backflow testing charge and levying of assessments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor.
You have more work on this one, though, I can tell.
Members of the council, this is a similar item, where we're switching over to the water side of our business, utility, rather, and there are, where we have eighteen delinquent customer accounts. These are customers that have backflow prevention devices, which by state law are to be certified, inspected, once a year. We give customers the opportunity to do that themselves, and, or, or to use the city to perform that service. And for ones that allow the city to do that certification, and then they don't pay us, they end up on this list. Same thing, the city provides a procedure for providing adequate notice, invoicing notifications of, of having the outstanding charges, so there's plenty of opportunity to, to pay up. Because it is not on the water bill, or the sewage rates, it's, it's actually a fee for service, there are, it's a different penalty that kicks in, and that's listed in our list, our services and fee schedule. We have a penalty of fifteen dollars plus an administration fee of thirty-five, for a total per account of fifty-dollar, you know, administration fee and penalties per, per account. That is, concludes the short presentation once again, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any questions from council members? Seeing none, it's kind of a routine thing. I will say that looking at the assessor parcel numbers, ten of the total eighteen parcel numbers have the same first six digits, which, I didn't look this up on a map in the county, but it leads me to believe they're relatively, in some general form, close to each other. I don't know if that's a neighborhood, or just happen to be parcels, but am I correct in assuming at least the first six digits, when you have those, usually that means they're all pretty close to each other?
That would appear to hope, that they're in proximity, sure.
Yes, yeah, that's kind of odd, out of the eighteen, ten are very close proximity. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone with comments or questions? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public comment, and bring it back to council for direction.
I move that we approve a resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges, and directing the levying of assessments on the fiscal year 1920 property tax rolls.
And I'll second that. Motion is second, is there any further comment? Or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 4-0 vote again. All right, and now we'll go into our regular agenda items, and the first one, item 11A, is award of the construction contract for the East Kattati Avenue Street Rehabilitation Project. Why do I think this is going to be the Craig Scott Show this evening? Please, take over.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig Scott, public works director, city engineer. City has been successful in acquiring a grant for substantial funds, $675,000 from federal grant money for roadway preservation work, and it started back on May 23rd, 2017, when the city council approved a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for those funds. We, we, the staff went ahead and applied for, for that grant, and then came back again to city council for the design contract, and the, this, the project has since been designed, and then last month, we, we went ahead and advertised it, and we received two bids. One was from Team Gelati, and the other from Gelati Brothers, Inc., and the apparent, the low bidder was for an amount which was 11% over the engineer's estimate, and so the financial section of the staff report shows how we're making that hold, because that, that does require additional shifting of funds around from what the council just last month had adopted in, in the annual budget. So bottom line is, there's another, staff is requesting inappropriate funds be moved from the general fund of $106,000 to the project, and from the capital outlay contributions of $94,366. And so with those two adjustments, we would, we're projecting a half sufficient budget to carry this project through. Now it includes the, the construction cost, the construction management cost, which we also did an RFP for, and selected GHD engineers to perform the construction management, and there's industry standards for contingency for construction, and so that includes that amount, too. And so with the budget adjustment, we believe we would have sufficient funds to, to bring this project in for a landing. The project itself is, consists of repaving East Kattati Avenue from easterly side of the railroad tracks, the smart tracks, all the way to the city limits, landscaping the existing median opposite Sunflower Park, updating traffic signs, repairing and restoring ADA compliance at various cracked and uplifted sections of damaged sidewalk, and installing ADA accessibility improvements to driveways and sidewalk access ramps along that segment. The asphalt roadway rehabilitation require a three-inch grind and overlay, so it's not a sort of topical repair, it's pretty substantial, they're grinding off three inches of it and putting brand-new hot mix asphalt on top of that, so that section will be basically a Okay, so just again, looking at the funding sources, the city's local funds were utilized significantly using Measure G. Measure G funds really make projects like this possible, and in the city's adopted budget, there's 3.6 million for pavement repairs, which is about 53% of all operating expenditures in the general fund. So that, that is a significant expenditure of funds, and the city's objective is, is to get through the rehab part of it, get to deferred maintenance of our roadways, which are more expensive rehabilitation costs, and move into more preventative maintenance, which are just a fraction of the cost of these, of these repair methods. And we, we hope, you know, with, with the five-year CIP that we presented, and projects including this, that we would get there, you know, in, in half a decade or so. So forty-five days, contractor has forty-five working days to complete the work, and I know in past projects, there's some interest in, in liquidated damages, we did set that at $1,500 a day, because of the, that is a, a main collector, or arterial roadway, and so any kind of delay to this project could potentially impact businesses, and, you know, the economic well-being of this area, so. That concludes the presentation, I'd be happy to respond, any questions you may have?
All right, thank you very much. I will start towards my left, to see if there's any questions for Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Landman, any questions at this point? Councilmember, yes, please.
So Craig, do we know when this will begin? Do we have any sense of when it'll begin?
Certainly, so with the, upon approval tonight, anticipating that, the contractor has ten days to get the contract documents back to us, insurance bonds, the, the performance materials bonds, and we would take a look at those, and make sure that's all complete, and give them a notice to proceed. So we're looking at probably two, two and a half weeks from now, they can potentially be mobilized out there, so mid, mid-August, and with forty-five days, that would get a, get us out to sometime in, you know, late end of September. I would imagine first week in October, they'd be all wrapping up, so I'd, I'd see them getting out there mid, mid-August.
So as you pointed out, that's one of our main thoroughfares, and I don't have the date, because I don't have children starting school right now, but that seems to me during the timeframe when school will be beginning, so are they prepared to have additional traffic monitoring, if you will, since there, it is a heavily traveled road?
Traffic inconvenience is, is to the large part unavoidable, and so what we, how we do mitigate it is with signage, we'll have electronic message boards, so those people are encouraged to take alternative routes during construction. There will be lanes open during construction, there's not a lane, a complete street closure, that would be pretty dramatic, so there are lanes, you know, folks will, will be able to go both ways during construction. I think that the best way we mitigate it is just to, to make sure that the contractor's being efficient, and gets the job done. And, and as you see with the later staff item, we have some more construction going on, on Old Redwood Highway, which we'll talk about following this item.
Yeah, I just get particularly concerned, because that's the direction that a lot of the high school students take, and Sonoma State take, and all of those folks, and, you know, we all know how people get anxious when they get held up for ten seconds, so I just want to be sure that, that we have the proper, proper safety in place, and in particular, since it's so close to the railroad tracks, I would hate for people to, you know, be doing silly things, so I would like to be sure that they're monitoring it from a safety perspective.
I could do, I think it's appropriate to add to, Team Gelati is also the contractor that did the, the sewer project for us, just over the winter, and so we were, city was impressed by their safety, their traffic control measures that they implemented, I, you know, it certainly, again, we, it was a inconvenience for people, but they did, in our, our view, keep the site safe, very, very safety-conscious.
That's my only concern, is that we, we stay on top of that, in particular, because of what that, what that street is.
All right, thank you very much for those questions. No further questions at this point for staff? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Wow, all these hands at once. Solderman, we'll start with you.
I'd like to point out, this is also much funded by the state grant, and the train station and all that, just so there, we know, people know a difference. It's over budget. It's like $170,000 over budget. How many of your street projects already come over, over budget? You're already, when we had the triple flicks, fix?
Triple?
Flip sales tax money coming in, $250,000? You guys, within a month, had it put, put on the roads. How about spending, making Team Gelati fix the dang work they did? Have you looked at the intersection, the main intersection town? It's breaking up from the work they've already done, and you guys want to pay these people more money. It's ridiculous, the state of the roads, you're letting them go, things like this, where you go over budget all the time, and where, where are you getting them? It's not Measure G money, it is our sales tax money. Half of Measure G goes to, has gone to, salaries went up, and benefits went up, by half of what you, it's really one-fourth of, of percent of your city salaries for the same amount of people, benefits and all that, that's where Measure G is going, not to these roads. These are our property taxes, they're general fund monies, they're the regular sales tax, stop putting it on Measure G, it's not Measure G. And this one especially, it's a grant. It's half a grant because of the train station, and you know that, and be honest to these people.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Behrich.
Well, we've heard a little bit about safety tonight, but still no word about the six-foot-high weeds that are running rampant through this town, that no one seems to care about, but I digress. So let me see if I understand you correctly, we have two bids for this project, one from Gelati, Inc., and the other one from Gelati Brothers. So let that sink in for a second, are you trying to suggest to me that these two bids are mutually exclusive? I mean, this is ridiculous. You got two bids from basically the same company, or the other side of the same hand. And Lori is right, before you sign any contract that is over budget, why don't we look at the project that, the paving project that Gelati Brothers did on Old Redwood Highway that hasn't lasted a year, it's lifting up in many places, that project was a complete joke before the community, people were complaining it was one of the roughest rides in town to drive down Old Redwood Highway, and it was the city manager, who said, after the project was completed, and the complaints from the citizens came in, that he was going to assure us that Gelati Brothers was going to come back and make those repairs. Have they come back and made any repairs? You all know they haven't, you all drive down those streets each week. Like Mr. Moore likes to say, it looks like shit. Okay, so I know that you're, you can be pressed between a rock and a hard spot when it comes, comes to finding contractors who can do this size of work, but it's incumbent upon you, with your fiduciary relationship with the community, to make sure that when you spend our tax money, you hold these contractors accountable and responsible for the services and the products that they've contracted to perform for the, for the city, and you're not doing that. It's how fast can we get the project done? Oh, we're going to start in a couple weeks. Well, we're going to worry about the, the school... Well, we're going to worry about the school, children and people being held up 10 seconds at the railroad tracks. Stop enabling the motorists. You're running a city. Mr. Scott is right. We're going to have some traffic delays, okay? But look at the quality of the workmanship of what Gelati Brothers has been producing for you, the hard-earned money that we're spending for these projects, and whether we're getting value for our money. Because if you ask me, I say no, we're not.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this agenda item? See, no one. I'll go ahead and close this item. You'll also notice the next agenda item does address Old Redwood Highway. Yeah, so it is included. All right, any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Harvey?
Craig, who did the Old Redwood Highway project? Was it one of these two?
It was Argonaut Construction, not Team Gelati.
Okay, I couldn't remember, and I just wanted that clarified. And I believe that in, right in the staff report, it very well states that part of the funding, as a matter of fact, $675,000 worth of this funding is a grant that we received. So I believe that that's been already stated in the staff report. And Measure G is a sales tax, and that sales tax goes into our general fund. And so road projects are part of what comes out of that as our salaries and all kinds of things. So it's not to say that everything is one way or another. We fund all of our discretionary items out of the general fund. And so this is one of the items, I think, that the council's been pretty clear that they have a priority of when things, when we're able to, we want to do what we can to increase funding on our roads. And I think that that's really what we're trying to do here. Anyways, that's all.
All right, thank you very much for those comments. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Scott. I noticed this bid is a little bit over 11%, actually, over the engineer's estimate. And I noticed the next one is under a little bit. And I'm trying to remember, I've seen these estimates hit close, hit low, hit high. What's the typical range that you've seen typically in your career? Because I've yet to see them consistently stay centered exactly on the engineer's estimate, no matter how close, hard we try, or anywhere else for that matter. Or what it is, what are some of the worst, the biggest swings you've seen?
I don't know if there is a typical, but the goal is to have the engineer's estimate be close enough that it's useful for budgetary purposes. Where it fails in that is if you get outside the 10%, 15%, and then all of a sudden, we're reevaluating our budget. With an 11%, this one was getting on the margin.
Yeah.
And so it is a relief to staff, because we want to see these projects move forward, that we have a project, because we have two really good bids from two very reputable contractors. So, yeah, it's more what the engineer's estimate's trying to do. It's trying to get that realistic cost. And so anything outside of that, there's, is caused by some external thing that was unpredictable, for example.
And we certainly know.
In this case, it was, looked like it was the spike in gas prices, which then moved to higher asphalt prices, which was a primary cause of that.
That's good to hear. My experience over the years, I've seen some well above that, and I do seem to remember some raised eyebrows at that point. But I also know, being an estimate and just a guide, that's the way it works. And then you put your bids out, and you see what you get. But that leads me to my next question you mentioned, because this one was on the margin, just starting to get in that high edge where budget-wise, it's problematic somewhat. We were able to readjust and deal with that. I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask staff just to answer it. Would we have had that flexibility? Would we have been as likely to have that flexibility to take advantage of this rather large grant? We're ahead of this in over a 60/40 ratio and move forward with this if we didn't have Measure G funds backfilling our funding?
Yeah, we wouldn't be in the position to take advantage of this grant or probably many grants without Measure G.
You know, I had that sense, and I think it's a good thing to point out, because number one, we look at the value of what we're receiving money-wise for this versus what we're spending. That's clearly a good thing. Anybody likes that when they're spending money. But more than that, where the money's being spent, I think, is a really good thing. Any investment in roads, if you can get ahead in that, that long-term saves money for people. So I think that's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions or comments?
No, I think so.
Okay, very good. All right, then we, I have no additional questions or comments of what's already been asked. Checking my notes again. So it's a decision time now.
Want a motion?
Motion, be great.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding the East Cotati Avenue Street Rehabilitation Project to Team Gelati Incorporated appropriating additional funding and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the construction management, and the inspection agreement, and any needed change orders up to the approved project budget amount.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion on this item?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Please show a four vote in favor to move that forward. Thank you very much. And we'll go on to item 11B, which is award of, conveniently enough, the construction contract for the 2019 Street Construction and Improvements Project. We're staying on a good theme here.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, I know it's you again, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this, the street project is more, is, you know, is not beholden to the state grants or the federal grants, as was the last item. It's more city-wide, so a lot more streets come into play. And so for that reason, we have a pavement management program, which is updated every two years, which informs these decisions. And this is a significant project for the city. There's two and a half million dollar budget in the adopted annual budget for the city. In terms of when, transparency, when the council has been able to weigh in on this selection of streets, there were actually three prior times. This is our fourth visit to council, believe it or not, on this collection of roadway projects. Back in October 10th, 2018, the city council approved the 2019 Street Construction Improvements Project and along with it, the design agreement with Harrison Associates. And then on May, March 26th of this year, the draft five-year Street Capital Improvement Program was presented as an information item, and this project was part of that package. And then the third visit was part of the SB1 approval process. The Road Rehabilitation Renewal Act of 2017 requires that by May 1st of every year, the city by resolution present, identify a list of projects for SB1 funding. And so we did that because there's 665 feet of this project on Linden Lane Avenue, Linden Avenue, that will be funded by the, those funds, the SB1 funds. Following, so for the timeline, we've got the, we had a, staff had a very busy June and July bidding street projects, as they were both out at the same time. And this project, we opened bids on June 16th, and two bids were received. The low bid by Argonaut Constructors of $2,26,221, which was, as had been mentioned, 0.1% under the engineer's estimate, which is a good thing. And then the second bid was from Team Gelati for $2.2 plus or minus million dollars. The good news there is that the $2.5 million that was in the adopted budget, we are good with that. Staff believes with the contingency, with the construction management contract and with this construction contract, we have sufficient funds to complete construction of this project. At the RFP, we got double duty out of the street RFP of the engineering firms that replied. We select, used that process to select Green Valley consultants to perform the construction management for this project. The project is, there's a figure in the staff report. So we have, we're finishing off roadways in the L section. So we have Lincoln Avenue, Linden Avenue, Loretto Avenue, and Benson Lane as receiving significant rehabilitation treatment, similar to what happened last, what was conducted out there last summer with the full-depth reclamation. We have East Cotati going the other way from the railroad tracks, going west all the way down to Old Redwood Highway with digouts, specific digouts where in problem areas, cracked ceiling, and then a slurry seal on top of that. Those roadways were done eight, 10 years ago, I believe. And so they're starting to show, 10 years ago, thank you, signs of cracking and linear cracking. If we don't catch those now, the deterioration could progress kind of rapidly. So this is more preventative maintenance on that section. And then, as was mentioned on the prior item, staff is being responsive to the citizen comments and complaints on Old Redwood Highway on that section up to specifically, I mean, particularly William George in that intersection, which is not done well. There, the section from William George all the way to Gravenstein Way has fared better, but there are still localized areas that have peeled up. And so we will address it all the way back to Gravenstein Way. And... So again, this is a significant part of our capital improvement program for roadways. And I did want to remind everyone what the path we're on in terms of our conditions of our roadways. We're in a rehabilitation state right now where we're trying to get, we're getting to streets in pretty poor condition, and these are expensive treatments. But after four, five, six years, our condition will be so that our streets overall are in a good condition, if not really good, very good, in which case we would be looking at preventative maintenance treatments at a much less costly measure. In fact, by 2024, the consultants run the numbers with these projects and the projects to follow, and we would go from a PCI, Pavement Condition Index, from, which goes from zero to 100 of 54, 55 to 70. We currently, even with the 55 score, we are at the top 25 percentile of cities of our size. So we're in, we're at the, you know, at the top of that group with a PCI of in the 60s. And if we reach 70, that would be quite astounding for us. At our size city, we'd probably be up there at the top 1 percentile at that point. But it's a much more cost-effective place to be in terms of our managing our roadway infrastructure. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. And then we've got the resolution for the construction and the CM contract.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. And we'll start with Councilmember Landman. Any questions or comments?
Two questions. First of all, you mentioned some of the progress we've made in increasing our PCI, which is a good thing. And you mentioned defining cities of our size. I wanted to ask you to speak a little to the size of that, the sampling size in the region. Is this just local? Is this the county? Is this the cities in Sonoma County? Is this statewide? How big a sample are we looking at? Because that's kind of an important thing.
These are statewide, these are cities statewide.
Okay.
That the list that takes us come out on. The pavement management program is a state-mandated program that all the cities in California participate in, and that data is maintained and tracked.
So essentially, it's a statewide database?
Correct.
Good, that's good to hear. This is a much easier question, although that one seemed pretty easy for you, too. I wanted to ask you particularly about the L-section part of this work. What is the likely start date and what do we think the project length might be? Are we starting in August, late August? When do you think this kicks off?
So the response I gave before, ditto on that. With these projects, we open bids at slightly different times, but arriving at the same time of this council meeting for approval, they are now on the same track. That, so we're looking at mid-August for actual seeing work begin, mobilization out there and wrapping up around the early part of October. And just anticipating any further questions on that. Having two contractors in similar areas of the city at the same time will pose, we'll need to give that some additional attention, make sure that they stay out of each other's way and coordinate their activities.
I think there should be enough geographical space to make that work. Well, you know, normally, people are really concerned with this much noise disruption. From my experience last year with the work in the previous part of L-section, everybody was really happy to see it. So I think you're going to find the same thing here. This is long overdue and a good direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your questions and comments. Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions or comments?
No.
Nothing, okay. Councilmember Harvey, yes, you do, I can tell.
So since this was the contractor that we had difficulty with, with Old Redwood Highway, what safeguards have we put in place to ensure that we don't have a repeat situation?
Okay, so there are really different scenarios. We are familiar with the contractors, so that gets us a leg up. The prior project was a lot more complex, had a lot more different, a lot of different pieces to it. Had sidewalk and the plazas. And just specifically, the relevant piece was the paving, which was actually not the primary purpose of that project. It was just originally going to be a slurry seal, which was questionable whether that would be sufficient. And so we did use this technology, which not a lot of people use, which was a double fiber seal. It's a thinner, thin layer of asphalt, but it's got polymers in it and fire, just components to make it a lot more durable. And so I think in that respect, it wasn't, it was applied correctly. The manufacturer, the provider of that material was there on-site directing Argonaut on, you know, the proper application of it. So I think that was independent of the, any specific contractor. It was the product that we're seeing in combination with the roadway, you know, the actual conditions of the roadway, which vary from roadway to roadway. So I'm going to make the case that it was kind of independent of that contractor. Argonaut is a reputable contractor, and so we have a lot of faith that they're going to do a good job. It was, thank you. It was a subcontractor that did the actual.
Yeah, I'll just add that the slurry, this double fiber seal was something that had come recommended from Caltrans jobs. You know, as you recall, way back when we were talking about it. It was on-ramps and off-ramps that had been done with this treatment method, apparently to great success. In our case, it didn't work out. I won't bore everyone with all the details, but the actual. I won't bore everyone with all the details, but the actual application wasn't done by Argonaut. Argonaut was the general, but there was a specialty subcontractor that was familiar with that particular type of treatment that came in and did the application. In this case, Argonaut is the contractor that's going to be doing the work directly, so there is no subcontractor between the on-the-ground work and the general. So we're just dealing directly with the general contractor and their forces.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to be real transparent here. We, we had this project. It obviously didn't work. Anybody that drives down there knows that it has some very serious issues. And, and I'm cognizant of spending, you know, additional funds again to redo it. I think also part of the problem that we ran into was also a timing issue because, as y'all recall, they did it and the next day we had like torrential rain for two or three days. So I want to be sure that it gets time to, you know, whatever it is that it does, set up, yeah, set up properly so that they don't push us, because it seemed like we got pushed later and later and later, and, and then we had that, you know, freak setup. I mean, it was torrential rain, and it just totally fell apart. So I'm glad to hear that it was a subcontractor and not Argonaut. And hopefully, they will do a better job, because obviously, what we got the last time on that one section does make me a little bit leery.
Anything else? That's it? Thank you. Yeah, I, I remember the conversation the night that we moved forward with this. It was kind of what was a new product that certainly we had never used. We did get the recommendation from Caltrans. I remember hearing that. And, and, you know, it suffice it to say, the decision that we made up here that night was not the right one, but we didn't know any better. Now we do. And so, I mean, that Argonaut I've seen doing work all over the place, so I think they are a reputable company, and I think if it's a completely different, not just materials that are being used, but even a different process, you know, they're going to grind it down and go with the overlay. So I, I'm hopeful, we're not going to have issues, but we'll have people on site. But we're, and the stake was made in downtown, and we don't want to go there again. We're not going to use that process again. And so I think we've all learned a valuable lesson in that sense. Yes, Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to save this comment to later, but since we're on the subject, I think it makes sense to bring it forward now, even though it's not really so much a question, if you'll excuse me. I was going to mention that. We've all thought about that. I had a lot of concern about this, and I just wanted to put out there, you know, thought long and hard about this, wanted to kind of lay down a benchmark. I'm really looking to see how Argonaut performs on this particular project. I understand there may have been some mitigating circumstances. On the other hand, it also seems there was a lot of finger pointing in different directions and not, not as strong of standing behind the project and getting done as I would have liked to have seen. Frankly, had the difference between the two bids not been so different, I would have been tempted to go with Team Gelati, or at least recommend that. Having said that, I'm hearing what's being said. I have a much better feeling about this time, but I just want to lay down that I think, speaking for myself, and I wouldn't be surprised for all my colleagues, we're going to be looking very closely at how this project comes out, and that will certainly influence future awarding of bids to Argonaut, I suspect. So this would be a chance to perhaps get back on a better foot with this. So I just wanted to put that out there. I felt it needed to be said. With a difference of 200K, I'm not willing to make the taxpayers take that just when it looks like this might have been a random thing that happened. But nevertheless, I just wanted to make sure everybody at Argonaut understands this has been a problem for us, and it's been a problem for the community, so we have to take a good, close look at it. And I'm hopeful this will prove it was just a one-time thing. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. No, thank you for your comments. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Mr. Berch?
Thank you, Mayor. This isn't really an issue of whether Argonaut is reputable or not, to me. It's more of an issue whether the council is reputable or not. That's the question. Subcontractors are responsible to their general contractors, at least in the construction field that I'm in. So Argonaut should be holding the subcontractors responsible for any faulty material, material that's not mixed properly or applied properly. Why we're using this item tonight to bring up an, an age-old item that should have been brought before the council earlier of Mr. Obid's promise that he was going to have the contractors come back and do the proper repair? Here we are many months later, and we're not getting that. We're getting the runaround. Now, Mr. Landman wants to suggest that we give Argonaut a second chance to prove themselves. I mean, this is just lunacy. I'm not talking about giving anybody second chances. Come back, have the city attorney read the warranty, read the contract, read the bid, find out what warranties are in there, any liquidated damages and so forth, and, and what the remedy is for repair, and get Argonaut to come back with their sub and do the necessary repair. This isn't rocket science. Talking about a warranty, good faith, materials, and workmanship. You know, business law 101. And we talk about Measure G, and if it wasn't for Measure G, none of this would be happening. Well, you know what? If the, if this town was financially sustainable, we wouldn't need to have Measure G and some of the highest sales tax rates in the county. If you attracted tourism, if you attracted business, if you were business-friendly, if the town was not top-heavy with staff, if we didn't have a Taj Mahal police station that we're still making payments on, if we didn't have long-term, ongoing debt that we're trying to service, if we didn't have unfunded liabilities, we wouldn't need Measure G. Watch Runner Park, watch what Petaluma's doing and so forth, with millions of dollars of funds in reserve. Not that they're perfect. The poor conditions out there on the roadway are your legacy. You've kicked the can down the road. Mr. Obid has kicked down the can down the road. Argonaut's laughing at us. I don't care if it's Gelati or it's Argonaut. Does it really matter? It's our money. You gotta, you gotta treat our tax money like it's our money. It's not play money. I know you're, some of you are busy, so I know some of you are still working and so forth, but my God, you know, put your backbone into some of these contracts and stand up for the people of this town and hold these contractors accountable. I mean, poor Mr. Scott, what you're making him go through with all this double talk and jive and so forth. You guys have made a promise to the community to make those repairs on Old Redwood Highway. Now you're gonna, you're going to award Argonaut a second chance to do the same thing again, unless you figure out a way to hold them accountable.
All right, thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Alderman.
I want to know where you're thinking you're going to get the money for all of this, too. You missed, in the last item, Mr. Craig Scott said it's 51% of your operating budget. Well, your police force is 70% of your operating budget. You're not where, you're going to bankrupt this town also with your poor planning. You over, always overestimate revenues of whatever you get and underscore the costs. The, the costs are always higher, the revenues are over and over again. Then you don't do the project because you don't have the money. It's over, if you look at the budget, that's it is. And then the second thing, this is a complete misreputationation, that you'll be in the top 1%, your top 25%. That MTC show, study showed we were 97th out of 106th. Look at the figures. It shows, yes, our general overall one is not bad. It's like in the 50s. But we have the whole west side of town that is almost all zeros, zero, that, and that was two years ago, they were tested. And you're not planning even getting to them to 2021. Have, I've shown you all pictures of Richardson Lane, which is nearly a dirt road. You guys do nothing. By the time you use all the money in L section, the west side's going to be dirt roads and probably buggies with, you know, how much money have you put in this, the, the downtown area, L section, all that, at the sacrifice of the people who pay the taxes over on the west side? We get nothing. We get, I haven't seen a police car in a month, and I can see them right in front of my window. You know, what the heck are we paying for out there? We have homeless out there, we have fire dangers, and you're doing nothing. I'm tired of it. This contract should be tabled and weighed until you know exactly where you're going to get, when the money's coming in, just not awarding it now. Do it next spring when it's, when you know exactly you have, how much money you will have for the year.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this topic? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. I believe the statement was made that it was equivalent to 51% of the operating budget, not that it was actually 51% of the operating budget. So there is a slight difference there. But again, there's probably very few municipalities in anywhere, not just California, but anywhere, who will spend up to that amount of money, whatever the different sources are, on road repairs. So I believe that was the comment that was made by staff, and I appreciate that comment. All right, back to council, and do we have any further comments or questions at this point? Councilmember Harvey?
No, go ahead.
None?
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Councilmember Landman?
First of all, as far as, I am pretty sympathetic to seeing things done in the west side of town, because I actually live over there, so I tend to be somewhat sympathetic to that. And it just reminded me that actually, when we started, what was it, three years ago? Maybe four? Probably three. One of the very first roads we did when, after finally coming out of MTC, was actually on the west side. As a matter of fact, right in front of one of the speaker's houses. It's actually to the point where it's actually probably at the point where...
There was a branch.
For the record, for people watching this, I'm being interrupted from the audience, and that's why I'm waiting a second.
I'm sorry.
And as soon as they're done interrupting me, I'll finish my comments. So I think it's important to point out, you know, in speaking of Richardson Lane, I would agree. This is one of the most cratered, alligator, alligator roads I've ever seen. But let me ask Mr. Scott or Mr. Obid, with the costs of roads being such there, if we were to invest in repairing, would it get any worse if we let it wait a year or two to fix it? I mean, I know the answer's no, but I want you to say it for the public, because you know more about this. You can't get a road much worse than this, because otherwise, indeed, Ms. Alderman's right, you wouldn't even get a horse and buggy down there.
No, you're correct. Once it gets to that.
So if we put the money into fixing that, though, full-depth replication, probably a new roadbed, we didn't even know if there's a real roadbed, it was put under that when it was built, would that be not essentially seven other streets than what we would have, roughly? Because I know it's roughly seven times more expensive to do a street like that rather than a simple overlay. Would that be seven streets that we'd have to ignore regular maintenance on and potentially let them get worse?
There, there is a trade-off, certainly.
I point that out just to point out there's a reason for this. There's a science to how you invest money in roads. That's why there's actually software for doing this now, to try and get the most bang for your buck, because it's like a Venus flytrap for cities. If you just let a committee, a neighborhood committee, throw money at whatever road, usually the road that's in front of them that looks the worst, you'll never get ahead. And we have a goal of actually getting ahead with this. So I think that's good. The last thing I want to, it was mentioned, our reserves being perhaps not in good shape, or our road condition not truly being in good shape compared to Petaluma. Now, I like Petaluma. I love the city, and I love the people who work there. I just wanted to ask, I have a sense we've been very prudent with reserves in this city. Now, I know we're much smaller, and the numeric figure is not as large as Petaluma. Would I be incorrect in assuming that our reserves are at least as good, if not potentially a little better proportionately?
So I'm not, I'm not familiar with the reserves, but we, we do have a 71% reserve, which is very significant.
Yeah, that's pretty incredible. So I'm not too worried about that. And as far as comparing our road condition, well, I don't even have to think about that one. Poor Petaluma is in the place we're trying to avoid getting into. They're got, they've got behind that eight ball with roads, and it's hard for them to catch up. So I certainly am not going to pick on them. But to say that we're dropping behind just isn't correct, so I wanted to correct that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman, any comments at this point?
Just briefly, that it's, I appreciate that we're, we're under our budget for it, for the 2.5, so that's, that's always great to be able to, and actually, not one, but both bids were below that, so I was glad to see that, so thank you for that.
All right. And with that, yes, you may make a comment, of course.
Again, I just want to be sure that we are very tight on that warranty language, because I, I don't feel that we were where we needed to be on the last project, so I want to be sure that that's as tight as it can be. I know that some of those contracts are pretty cookie cutter, and we don't have a lot of say in them, but I want to be sure that they know that we're going to be watching that very carefully.
Yeah, and I will, I will point out, even though there was discussion about a warranty, it's a pretty simplistic way to look at it. We had long discussions with our construction attorneys at the time, so it wasn't like it was a lightly-held decision just to, you know, kind of end up where we are today fixing it. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of thought, a lot of consultation that went into that. So it's, you know, it's not as simple as, look at the warranty.
And again, we have, there's a different process and a different, and different materials, too, so I think that has a lot to do with that particular problem that we had. Okay, with that, I'm looking for direction from council.
I would like to move a resolution awarding the 2019 Street Construction and Improvements Project to Argonaut Constructors for an amount not to exceed $2,26,221.55, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the construction management, and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders up to the approved project budget.
Second?
All right. We have a motion of second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 4-0 vote in favor to move that forward. Thank you very much. All right, we're now at item 11C, which is approval of South Sonoma Business Park Assessment District refinancing. I was going to maybe ask Mr. Scott to take this one on, but I think he's, I think he's done for the night, so Angela, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. So briefly, back in 2001, and keep it brief, right, the South Sonoma Business Park Assessment District issued tax-exempt bonds in order to mitigate the biological impacts of their combined sites. This assessment district encompasses the area of this development, sorry, includes the Cotati cottages, as well as parcel for lows and the villages. If you don't remember, they just had their extension on their map for the villages. There's a really great map of this district at packet page 228. So at the time of this issuance in 2001, the interest rate that we were available to obtain was a 6.5%. In May of this year, Mr. Rob Schmidt, the Vice President of NHA Advisors, reached out to the city as our municipal advisor and informed us of a current opportunity to refund this bond. And what was proposed could keep the payment terms with a maturity of 20, sorry, 2033, as you can see on packet page 190, but this refunding could significantly drop the interest rate to a possible 3.5%. With the initial projections and the funding, this bond was estimated to save taxpayers approximately 18% on their annual assessments. So in thinking about this, we decided to move forward with, working with municipal advisors and our placement agent, and put out bids to solicit purchase for the bond, and we actually got a much lower rate of 2.95%. This bid was provided by Banner Bank. So in acceptance with this bid, we are effectively saving taxpayers approximately 21% on their assessments within this district. Overall, with the interest rate reduction combined with the application of the funds that are currently held in trustee by Union Bank for the bonds, we're going to reduce approximately, over the life of the bond, $1.3 million in payments for this district. So that's all I have. I did keep it brief for you, with all the materials inside the packet. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions and comments, and then Rob can chime in to assist. in to assist with any additional information.
Very good, thank you. Um, it, it's an amazing amount of money that is being saved there, and that's taxpayer money, so that's huge, that's really huge. So kudos to everybody involved on that project. Um, do we have any questions for, yes, Vice Mayor?
I just have a very quick comment, and I realize it's completely over-the-top AR, but I don't know if the report goes anywhere else. Um, I think, uh, route, State Route 116 is Gravinstein Highway, and you have it as Greenstein Highway. So I just wanted to, in case the report went, I just wanted to make that minor correction. Thank you, it's on page one, or in page, sorry, packet page 173. And I apologize for my editorial tendencies.
I don't know, I kinda like that, the Greenston Highway, it's kinda nice, might be a nice change. Councilmember Landman, please.
Well, I can live with the autocorrect mistake myself, I'm more really pleased. It isn't often we get to go out to the public and say, "Good news, we found a way to reduce your annual assessment," what was it, now we're, say, calling it about 21%? Was it just luck of the draw to get to 295 instead of 3.5, or was our timing just right? Was a lot of work by other people? Uh, I'd like to hear a little more about that at some point, perhaps, if this is the time I'd like to hear about that, but whatever it was, I'm gonna thank everybody involved, because that's really a significant thing, uh, that makes a big difference for everybody that owns property over there. I know a lot of people that live there, and they're going to be very happy when this fi, when they finally find out about it. I think it's good news.
Uh, Rob, if you wanna chime in, 'cause you've worked with Banner, and we met with them.
Please, yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself.
So I'm Rob Schmidt with NHA Advisors, um, as Angela mentioned, we're the municipal advisor for the city. Um, so it was very good timing, uh, we usually start out all our process and say, give a conservative estimate of where the interest rates could end up, because it's a two-to-three month process minimum, so we don't wanna, wanna overpromise ever. And, um, combined, just through the process, interest rates have really come down over the last three or four months, and so that resulted in even better interest rate than we originally anticipated, so that's, uh-
Well, that's good. I do remember moving into our first house, I hate to mention how many years ago, but we got that surprise, and it wasn't a good surprise, it went the other way before everything walked in, so I appreciate your responsibility in doing that, and I just have to comment, I bet it's kinda fun, how often do you get to go out and share good news like this?
Um, it happens more often than you think.
Really?
But, um, well, there's, there's a lot of debt out there, and we like to try to save taxpayers money, so that's, uh, it is, it is, we get to do it quite a bit, which is nice.
Well, that's a good thing. Thank you very much for your work, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I, I will also just add on real quick to something that Rob said, that we, um, we had a meeting with the inv, the bank that's investing, you know, to buy the, to purchase the bonds, and, um, and maybe this is, um, part of what your question was, they also had expressed, um, a lot of co, they expressed quite a bit of confidence in, in buying bonds, buying these bonds because of the CAFR and the, um, just all the financial documents that were available for them to review, that gave them, um, quite a bit of comfort in investing in this particular issuance.
Great, thank you. Now, we may have a need to call you back up, so I appreciate that. Um, Councilmember Harvey? I, I assume you were done, Councilmember?
How are the property owners notified that they will be getting this reduction?
So we, um, we did actually initially reach out to the significant property owners, let them know about this process in advance, and that was all done in advance, but then, um, after the fax, I think it just comes out through the assessment-
They're both in the property tax books.
Yeah, that's how they're notified.
Which are going to be, uh, going to be recorded here in, uh, August.
August, yeah.
And then show up on the first one as December tax books.
So it's sort of just a surprise to them, we don't notify them that, oh, by the way, we, we save this money for you?
Yeah, no, I would say, I would say that, um, that, I can't speak for Lowe's, I mean, they're a large corporation, I don't know where notices go, for, for them, but for the other property owners, um, that are undeveloped, w- we're all, I think, in direct communication with them, so they're very aware of what's happening. Um, with respect to the cottages, um, we're in communication with the HOA, so they're aware.
Okay.
The HOA is aware.
So, I just, you know, it was just like, "Surprise! You get a 20, 20% decrease in this." I just was wondering if there was a mechanism, um, for letting people know, but it sounds like we have different mechanisms depending upon who it is. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we could make sure to send a letter to the HOA, and failing that, if we're not able to communicate with them, perhaps just to the people of the cottages, 'cause I think this would be good for them, for them to understand.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we could, uh, we could ask when the, the tax assessors' bills come in, on that one-line item, maybe we could put like a little "I love Katati" logo, something, just a thought. All right, anyway, sorry for that. Yeah, sorry. Okay, um, I do not have any questions for staff at this point, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone wants to comment on this, all good news, no comments, all right? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring this back for action.
So I would move to approve resolutions declaring the city's intent to levy reassessments and to issue, is that the "they," or "its"? I just wanted to make sure I was using the right pronoun, "to do."
I'm sure you found that.
Okay. I will start over again, I move to approve resolutions declaring the city's intent to levy reassessments and to issue refunding bonds for the South Sonoma Business Park Reassessment District of the City of Katati, authorizing the issuance of limited obligation improvement bonds, South Sonoma Business Park Reassessment District, Series 2019, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,100,000, authorizing adoption of the reassessment report, and approving certain documents, and taking certain other actions in connection therewith.
I'd be happy to second that. Motion and a second, do we have any further discussion outside of sort of, yippee, and glad for those guys? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yippee. Opposed? You didn't have to say yippee. And abstentions? None, so please show a 4-0 vote in favor, and we'll move to item 11D, and that is nominations for regional commissions and committees on behalf of Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association and the City Selection Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I'll just do a brief one on this. So, um, in the continuing nomination process, mayors and councilmembers, which seems oddly continuous this year, um, as you, um, as you may all recall, uh, we had some A-bag, the A-bag delegate and alternate where, um, the nomination period happened prior to the last mayors and councilmembers meeting. At the meeting, um, the executive board decided to reopen and extend that nomination, 'cause no, no applications were received the first time. So, um, that was done, and, um, uh, we, uh, there was a council member from Runer Park, Jake McKenzie, who put his name, he was the prior, um, prior incumbent there, put his name back in for the, um, primary A-bag, uh, board member, representative, and then, um, the alternate, uh, which had been Julie Combs from Santa Rosa before, nobody had put in their name as an alternate, so, um, with the new mayors and council, next mayors and council, councilmembers meeting coming up here shortly, um, this is, I guess, where we stand on this particular set of nominations, and, um, the action tonight is to provide the mayor direction for these nominees. Thank you.
This nominee, singular?
Sorry, yes, it was singular.
Yeah, um, you know, the, the one thing that came up last time, and nobody seemed to have an answer for it, was, um, sort of a, an A-bag-related question, and that is, are these positions mandatory? In other words, we didn't have any nominees, and we weren't clear whether, okay, we just take a pass, or, a- and I still, I've never heard an answer, and I don't know if anybody's ever experienced that question before. I'm gonna try to reach out again, even though it's not really my purview to do that, but I'll just do it, just try to find out. So, anyway, here's, uh, what we have in front of us, I don't know if there's, probably no questions for staff, I'm gonna guess, so.
Well, the only thing that I remember from the last round was that they have to be elected officials. That was a qualification for the person being on the A-bag board.
I kinda remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, which of course Jake is, so.
Right.
Right. Okay, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Nope, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Nobody wants to comment on this? Okay? I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, I'm looking for direction, so we can, uh, have that discussion.
So I, I, I'm getting the feeling, over all of these meetings, that, um, nobody wants to step forward and take these spots because of the vehement reaction to, to what had happened with, um, well, I won't go into all the details, but, so, um, I have a feeling that Jake McKenzie, um, he knows the folks involved, he, he's been doing this for years, and I think he would be a fine A-bag executive board member, so I will throw that two cents out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem at this point, this has lingered far too long of not appointing somebody, it almost looks like, hey, Sonoma County, you know, do you know what you're doing up there? So, I mean, I'd be fine with moving that forward, but again, I'm looking for some kind of, well, direction.
I'd have to say, I've actually really struggled this, uh, actually right up to this moment, I'm still going back and forth. I mean, clearly, I agree with what you just said, and I agree, the question we're grappling with is no representation better than something we perceive potentially as bad representation, representation that doesn't truly represent us. That's, I'm not having a hard time squaring that. I get that, because this process has been so excruciating, uh, that it's become kind of a blasted heap that no one wants to set their foot on, and with that sense, Mr. McKenzie wants to do it, at this point, I'm sure that will happen. At the same time, I have a hard time voting for someone when I know they're gonna vote in ways that don't represent the interests of us, no matter if every other single council number in this county, other than him, said, "Do this." I have a feeling, you know, he certainly wouldn't, so, that's the caveat. Frankly, I, I don't, I would be happy to vote yes, I said, well, I'm lying, I would not be happy, but-
Yeah, how about this, you don't need to make a motion.
Yeah, I-
And just kinda see where the flow is.
Well, I'm just not sure if it carries, is all, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm kinda me, trying to indicate, probably it's just going to have to be let go, and it will be what it will be, and if there's problems down the line, then I think this county has the political wherewithal to deal with it if it needs to. But at this point, uh, it seems like it wouldn't be helpful to have a, the lone vote on the hill, you know, the, what are the, what's the saying, to die on that particular hill?
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I know we did struggle with this, we have struggled with this, it has been a very unpleasant, god, eight months, I'm guessing, at this point. Um, I have had a couple of conversations with Jake about this, I think Jake gets it, I think he, you know, um, understands that many of us were a little displeased with not being informed. I have, in recent months, seen many more things come from him, so that is a change in, in behavior, if you will, that I had not seen, you know, in a while. We are getting things, um, from him, uh, as they're coming on other things, so I, my sense is, is that he got that a lot of folks in Sonoma County were not really very, you know, very pleased with that, and, you know, I could only hope that, you know, that wouldn't happen again. I understand your, your, your frustration there, but I think he recognizes that there was a lot of people that were not happy, and there was a lot of stuff that went on that I, I think that he never expected. I, I just think he really didn't expect that to happen. So, um, again, this is kind of one of those things that, that, you know, nobody really wants to do. I, I certainly don't have the, the time and energy to, to get involved in this, you know, I, I feel like I have enough on my plate with the stuff that, you know, we have, um, with the city without, you know, kinda, kinda doing, um, this, and, and he seems to, to enjoy this, and, and all we can ask is that, that he keep us informed, and if there's something that, that, um, that we need to know about, that we know about it early, and he needs to stomp his feet and raise his voice, which I know he can do, both of, if there's something that we need to be paying attention to. And I think that that's kind of what didn't happen the last time, is it was happening, and we really didn't know, so that's kind of how I feel about that.
All right, very good, thank you. Have we all had a chance to speak?
Do you feel directed?
No, I don't feel directed yet. I need to open it for public comment. If anybody would like to comment on, I did already?
Yep.
I did already, it's been so long that I forgot. I'm gonna close it again, then, so there. All right, um, I think direction, we don't need a motion on this, I think direction is clear, that, um-
I'd be happy to direct you to, uh, vote, uh, for Mr. McKenzie at the upcoming Mayors and Council Members Association City Selection Committee meeting.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think we need a motion on this, is that correct? Just direction is all we're looking for? Yeah, direction, okay. Loud and clear, thank you very much, and we are now moving to item 12, which is our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, so, um, I have, I have, uh, lots of riveting news, as usual, but before I get into that, um, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, also just acknowledge Noah, who would, you did mention earlier this, earlier this evening when you introduced everybody, but Noah, um, as you mentioned, is our new community development director, and, um, I'm very happy to finally introduce him, we're, we're very lucky to have him. He comes to us with a background that I believe is perfectly suited to the goals of the city, um, that the goals of the city council is laid out for the community, and is very well-respected in the planning community, and, um, he has experience in the construction industry, and he'd spent 10 years at Santa Rosa, um, in the, in the community development department there, where he finished as a senior planner before, uh, moving to St. Helena as the community development director, um, for the past four years. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to, um, just make sure that we didn't let the meeting pass without having a little bit more of a formal introduction to Noah, and let him say a little bit.
Uh, thank you, Damian, and, uh, Mayor, and members of the council, um, and the community. I just wanna say, uh, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here, Katati's a great town, um, you know, I've lived in Sonoma County for a long time, since 2005, and I've always enjoyed coming to Katati, going to Redwood Cafe for some shows, and, uh, happy to be a part of the staff here. I've been able to kind of plug in over the last few weeks, and you have an excellent staff, and everybody's really committed to moving along the agenda that you all are setting, and, uh, very professional, and, and I feel like I'm, I'm already becoming, becoming part of that team, and I'm just really excited to help you and the community, and, and thank you for the opportunity.
All right, Noah, thank you again very much, um, we all got a chance to meet you just before the meeting started, so that was great, and, um, you know, with not one, but actually two reporters here in the room from our local paper, they may be, have a reason to ask you some questions after this meeting, so don't be surprised, but thank you, and it's great to have you on board. You need to continue, right? That wasn't your entire city manager report, that's it?
Well, that was the best part of it.
Okay, good.
All right, I'll, I'll get to the mundane stuff now. Actually, I should, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say, no, I shouldn't say that. Because, um, I did wanna mention something about the, uh, we'd mentioned this before, but the, um, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, this is the CAFR award that, um, we talked about at the last council meeting. This is, this is the highest form of recognition for governmental accounting and financial reporting, and, um, I just thought it was worth mentioning, we looked into a little bit of last year's statistics, um, from GFOA, and, um, of all the cities in the US, uh, only 5% get this award, this is all sizes, like, from the biggest to the smallest, and, um, of the cities with a population under 10,000, i.e. Katati, right, um, only 1% get this award. So, um, suffice it to say, this is an uncommon honor to get the award, and it says a lot about what, um, you know, what the, the policy direction the council has given, and the decisions the council makes, as well as the staff and admin services and all the department heads, to really, um, you know, get us to the point of kind of a cold standard in financial reporting. And I also mentioned a little bit earlier, just as a simple example, when we did this bond issuance, um, the investment bank was very happy to see all the information that we presented, which is really, I mean, if you're looking for financial information, there's- presented, which is really, I mean, if you're looking for financial information, there's a, if you really wanna know what's going on, you look at that, because it says everything about the city's financial condition. And, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up one more time with that extra information, and thank the council and the staff for making that all possible, so it's great. And, this is a bit more mundane, but we do have annual backflow testing, and we just talked about the assessment at the end of the year. And now, it's like Groundhog Day, we're sending letters out for testing. So, certification tests are due back to the city by August 29th, and if there's any questions, they can contact admin services at 665-3631. So, if you have a question, call them, don't let it, don't end up on the roll, the tax roll at the end of the year. And on construction updates, Kessin Ranch, the grading, as you may have noticed, is stepping into high gear. You're probably, if you've been out there today, for example, you're starting to see the, some of the pads getting rough graded out, so you can see where some of the houses are gonna actually be built, in the roadway grade, going up the hill. And, the roadways are expected to be graded by mid-August, and the sewer pipeline's been installed on Valparaiso, it was an upsize into the sewer, and we have a city inspector that continues to be on site to ensure the construction of the approved, I think, construction occurs according to the approved plans and specs, as well as helping with neighbor complaints. Whenever you're moving, whenever you're grading any site, it just creates a lot of, you know, noise, vibration, things like that. So, it's a particularly important time to be engaged in helping out with neighbors that are adjacent to it, because sometimes they don't know who to talk to, so we act, if we need to, we act as that conduit to get people, get people's concerns resolved. And then, the school street, West School Street pathway, this is a partial, it's partially CDBG, partially Measure G-funded project, that's out to bid right now, and the notice will go out to residents of the upcoming construction, once we have a schedule. So, we'll let people know what's going on, once we know. Well, obviously, we'll bring it to council for award, and at that point, we'll have a better idea of construction schedule. And then, you may have noticed that someone ran over a streetlight, we had a couple in one week. It was, it was...
Are you looking at me?
I don't think it was him or any of our staff that hit the streetlights, but, but for whatever reason, for whatever reason, we lost two streetlights in one week. And one of them was at the crosswalk at Laguna, and we're just in the process of replacing it, so. Just in case you hear about it from the community, it's about to be replaced here shortly. And then, on the recreation front, we, just this last Saturday, we celebrated Cattati Country at our 27th Annual Cattati Kids' Day Parade and Festival, and we had upwards of 2,000 people throughout the day. It was, it was really busy. Even all the merchants downtown felt like it was one of the busiest ones they remember. And they were concerned they'd run out of, at least, I went by the coffee shop and talked to them, just as an example, and they were afraid they were gonna run out of coffee and milk and everything, so. It was good. It's a good event.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we had over 50 vendor booths in the park offering different activities throughout the day, and it was a great success, so we just can't wait to do it again next year. It was fun. And last Friday night, we had a move in the park, we showed Incredibles 2, and we had about 250 people there, and it was, yeah, it was well-attended, it was great. I was hanging out there with my family as well, and my daughter even helped with some of the food vending, it's one of her favorite things to do. She's a vegetarian, except for hot dogs, she likes hot dogs.
I don't think there's meat in hot dogs, but I don't know that for a fact.
It's probably true, probably true. And our next move in the park will coincide with National Night Out, which was mentioned earlier this evening on the announcements, but that's August 6th, where we're showing Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse, and it'll include a barbecue hamburger dinner, beginning at 6:00 PM, games, activities, and it's an opportunity to connect with the police department and staff in just a casual way, so I definitely encourage everyone that wants to go to come out and hang out with us. I think you're gonna be flipping burgers, right? Yeah, all right, so, it'll be fun. And this week, we have 15 campers in our Adventure STEM Lego camp, and we have lots of kids over in the community center building bridges, helicopters, and all sorts of things. We have tens of thousands of Legos over there, which is like my dream, but I unfortunately have to work during the day, so I can't get over there. And then, we have our, we also have our sixth week of Camp Cattati, which continues to be a success, it's, they're basically sold out pretty much every week. And it's kinda cool, because things like the Lego camp aren't all-day camps, and so, our camps are structured to be all-day camps, where they can wrap around these shorter camps, so that for parents, you know, that just can't drop their kid off at 8:00 and pick them up at noon, you know, 'cause they have to work, they can, they can go back and forth between the all-day camp and the specialty camps. So, it's worked well, it's really nice to see. Next week, we host our final tennis camp, our junior farmster camp, there's a bunch of baby pigs over there now, if you haven't, if you've seen, there's a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of pig noises across the street today. And gymnastics camp is also next week. And then, we still serve free lunch in the park that's continuing through the rest of the summer for any child under 18, at La Plaza Park, between noon and 12:30. And this is a partnership with Redwood Empire Food Bank and other local nonprofits, and as I think I mentioned last time, all the unserved meals are then being donated to local adults in need, to help even more people and minimize any food waste from that event. And farmers markets in full swing will continue on Thursday nights through the summer, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM each week in La Plaza Park. And we've also recently partnered with Conservation Corps North Bay with a grant to provide new storm drain labels. We have the labels that don't, like, dump oil in the creek, because, you know, just informational labels. And so, so they're gonna be putting new labels in 300 storm drain locations throughout Cattati, refreshing all those, so that's, that's good. And other services, we put this out on our website, and also Facebook and so forth, but Conservation Corps also has free mattress recycling four days a week at their Cattati location on Blodgett Street, behind Lowe's, and free tire recycling, also free e-waste recycling events. So, good to know, you don't have to wait or go somewhere for some of those things, or potentially pay a lot of money, and mattresses can cost a lot of money to dispose of, so. If you want more information on that, you can visit their website at ccnorthbay.org. And then, finally, just to bring it all home, if you want any more information, you always can go to our website, you can contact, on the rec programs, contact Ashley at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at cattatycd.org. And with that, I think I'll be open for any questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? And I will reemphasize, Kids' Day seemed to be the busiest one I've been involved with, having been here 30 years in the city. Not only did I buy even more candy than the previous year, every year you buy more candy, I mean, I was, I literally had three pieces left when this one mom looked at me at the very end of the parade line and said, "My son." And I was very happy, I found three pieces in the bottom of the bag to hand over to him, or else I, I would've lost at least his vote in the future, so, okay. Thank you for that, and we'll go to city council member reports. We'll start with councilmember Harvey.
I have attended a couple of meetings that are on the Potter Valley Project, but there's really nothing to report on those. That will be a very long, very long process. Last night, I attended the meeting that Rancho Adobe put on, called COPE, Citizens Organized to Prepare for Emergencies, and that was a really informative presentation. There were, I wanna say, maybe about 20, 25 people there, and they were from, really all over the area, from Cattati, there was one couple from Renner Park, a bunch of people from Pen Grove, a couple people from Petaluma, but it was, they had a lot of really good information, and they do have the links to most of the stuff out on their website. But, that is all I have. My Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled for July, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Lamond.
Well, I think you deserve a vacation in July, so I'm glad you got it after this year. I'm gonna start by extending my sympathy to Mr. Bakker, who's probably worrying about what he's gonna hear from Oscar Mayer's legal team, due to the mayor wondering what may or may not be an Oscar Mayer hot dog, so, welcome to Cattati.
I did, I did not point out any name brand, just wanna be clear on that.
Well, now it's both of us, so we both got our foot in. On a slightly more serious note, I just wanna report on one thing. We did, I've mentioned in the past, Sonoma Clean Power's final budgeted rates for the years were coming up, and one of the difficulties for us in trying to calculate this is, we know our contract costs, we know how many customers we have, but one thing we don't know is what PCIA, or Power Charge and Difference Adjustment Charges PG&E is going to be giving us. And this is something that changes, it isn't random, but it, from our perception, it appears, it changes from time to time, because they have contracts that come due and go out at various times, which we, of course, are unaware of, and not often made aware of. They have infrastructure that comes in and out, for example, Diablo Canyon's kind of a big notable example. So, what the process is, and Angela will appreciate this from a budgeting standpoint, is we usually find out literally, some days before we're supposed to have a final budget, exactly how much we're gonna be hit with, and it can really markedly vary from assessments. So, having said, now that I've depressed everybody, there's one good piece of news I wanna share. We have, because of the difficult nature of this process, we've worked very hard for a few years trying to get some more transparency on it, and thanks to our Director of Regulatory Affairs, Mr. Neil Reardon, we were able to get this year, we found, towards the end of the process, a $200 million error in the calculation of PCIA fees, and we were able to get the CPC to correct that. That's in all PG&E's territory. So, that should reduce expenses for our customers by almost 14 million on an annualized basis. The actual savings will probably be less, it'll probably drop quite a bit, because the proposed PCIA increases for next year are expected to be very large. Again, unfortunately, we won't know to the last minute exactly how large, but at any rate, what I wanted to say, all this time we were worrying about maintaining rate parity, being a little better, we'll be, we'll be at a 2% savings this year in comparison. So, we'll be able to set aside money to protect in the long term, as well as remain competitive. The bottom line, power rates from PG&E seem to continue to go up, and much of it does pass through many of our customers naturally. Nevertheless, the good news is where it looks like we're gonna remain competitive, and in fact, at least for this next year, cheaper. So, I think that's good news for everybody that has a paycheck.
All right, thank you very much, councilmember, and Vice Mayor Skilman.
Thank you. Since I missed our last meeting, I'll be very brief, but I did attend the Renner Park Mayor's and Council's Dinner on June 13th, and that was a lot of fun, the library behind the scenes. And I also attended the music festival on June 15th, and very happily gave the mayor's speech. So, you need to step in every once in a while with the vice mayor, right, you know?
That's right.
And then, as we discussed, I attended Kids' Day, and that is always a great deal of fun. And I don't know why, it's just exhausting by the time, I mean, it's a very, very short parade, and yet somehow, by the time you get to the end of it, it's like, okay, ready for a shower and a break.
The stress of throwing candy.
That must be it. All of those kids, please give us sugar.
And there was not enough candy this year, we all...
No, we all fell short, surprisingly. And then, I've also, I haven't gone to the movies, but I have gone by, just to check and see, and it's been really well-attended, which is nice, 'cause it does tend to get chilly at night, and it's nice to see everybody bundled up, and I remember doing that with my own kids, so that's been nice to see, and then also going to the farmers markets. So, really enjoying the summertime produce. And that's all I have.
All righty, thank you very much. Just a couple of quick items. So, on the 2nd of July, we had KCBS Radio from San Francisco come up to do an interview on our press release on 100% Green Energy. So, that did air the very next morning, early in the morning, and somebody heard, but I did not, that it was also an extended story, it was run like on Sunday, so, but I tried to look for that online, I couldn't find anything, so I gave up on it. And we did not have our Ag and Open Space meeting last month, it seems like everybody seems to take July off for some unknown reason, but that'll be coming up this Thursday, so we'll be tackling some new topics then. And we will now move to item 14, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Do we have anyone? Ms. Alderman.
This is on future agenda items. If you did not have a 99% unanimous vote record of the council for the last five years, maybe on agenda items that you all decide that you're gonna put on, only the city was, does, and how, you know, certain posts I get are taken over on nextdoor.com, pointing this out with facts, yes, he's not looking at me. So, these are the ones we've been asking for, for years, or months, or, and you don't put on the agenda. Weed abatement, it's in the city code. You guys need to put it, I sent the video of whole danger to our neighborhood, and you guys are doing nothing. You're, haven't done it since 2012. Get on it. Everybody knows the story, how Diane Thompson took those files down to chief trainers, put them on the desk, on his desk, and said, "The weed abatement is the fire district's depart-" thing, fire district's responsibility now." Everybody in, it can be confirmed by everyone, and you've been denying it for seven years, through the firestorms, through everything. This, if something happens to this city, it is, you guys will be legally up a creek, and you will be responsible to the citizens of this town of not enforcing weed abatement. Other than that, you've never brought up senior services, you've never brought up, you can't handle ethics charges against people, you have to try them up here without even doing proper, you're not letting people defend themselves, you don't, can't even handle basic operation of the city council. Go, put things on the agenda that we want, that we citizens have been asking, that, how about the homeless that are behind the trail on Maple Avenue to Burger King? How about, there's just so many things that you guys completely, completely ignore, for, and this is your show, this is not the citizens', maybe if you had more than, more than, if you actually listened to us, you might have more than George and Barrick and I, the whole time, at council meetings. There's, for everybody who can't see it, there's George, me, and the, the Community Voice reporters, and a contractor guy. That's usual, people. If you guys want change out there, come to these frickin' meetings.
Thank you very much for those comments. Is there anyone else? What I would like to do at this point in time, Irene, since this may be a new reporter that's sitting near you, is this, are you, is this the gentleman? Just a quick introduction would be nice, so everybody in the room would get familiar with...
This is Paul Matheny, he's an intern at the Community Voice newspaper, and I brought him over because I don't know if he's, I think he's been to council meeting one time.
Or this one.
This one, I don't know. And I don't want him being a little man who walked into a bull's den, so I hope that Susan Harvey, Mayor John Deloso, and Skilman, Councilman Mark Matheny, and if I'm, see, manager again a little bit, I hope that you'll be kind enough to give him some comments, and make him feel welcome.
All right, great, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll go to item 15. Any information received after the agenda was posted? None? All right, then, we will be going into closed session. We have two items. The first one is conference with city labor negotiators, government code section 54957.6, city designated representative, city manager, or designee, employee organization is Cattati Employee Association. And the second item is public employee performance evaluation, public employ- evaluation, public employee performance, why does that in there twice? California Government Code Section 54957, title, city manager. Are there any public comments on those two items? Seen none, I will close that public comment, and we will adjourn to closed session and report out afterwards. Thank you all very much.